Those September ones.
Yes, I noticed that. That they're on their own.
Okay, so Kathy, I'll take just a moment for a report out. What session? Can you hear me?
Yeah, everybody here, Greg?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, the board took item seven into closed session. Uh, seven A conference with legal counsel existing litigation of the State of California versus Spalding Community Services District. Case number 2025 CBB 07673. The board voted three to zero uh to authorize the defense of the claim uh with Director Stollings voting yes, Director Clayton voting yes, and Director Oliver voting yes. Uh, the board also took item seven, uh conference with legal counsel, uh existing litigation of the Spalding Community Services District. Uh, no reportable actions taken. And the board also took it to closed session. Conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation. One potential case, no reportable action was taken on that.
Okay, thank you, Greg. We're gonna make a little change in the agenda and we're gonna have Firewise go next so that she can get on here.
Can I stand up here a little bit so I can place everyone?
Yes, yeah.
Hi there. Uh, I'm Tonya Smith. I am the Wildfire Resiliency Coordinator with Lassen Fire State Council. And I am also the Regional Coordinator for Firewise for Lassen County. Um, first off, I just wanted to say congratulations to the community for getting in your 2025 renewal. So you guys have been officially certified for the year and have a carry through to next year. Thank you for all of the hard work that you put in throughout the year in cleaning up your properties. It makes a huge difference to the area. Can't even begin to thank you enough for that. And of course, to Linda and John for all of the work that they put in to making sure that the renewal application got completed. Um, I kind of wanted just to come up here today so that I could answer any potential questions that anyone might have about Firewise. I'm kind of learning Firewise at the same time as you guys are. Um, I know that Firewise was previously, you know, set up by one of the other wildfire residency coordinators with the Fire State Council prior to me. There is about as much information as you have about Firewise as about how much information I have about Firewise. Um, it's typically run through CalFire itself. There's a potential change coming in the future where the local CalFire unit will be taking over kind of running at the regional coordinator role and being your point of contact for Firewise rather than me. I don't know when that change is officially coming. I just know that it's on the horizon. But that doesn't mean that the Fire State Council will not continue to be involved in everything that Firewise does up in this community. Um, does anyone have any questions regarding Firewise?
Um, what, how do other communities involve their residents?
So if there is another community that would like to set up a Firewise community that isn't already a Firewise community.
Tonya, I'm sorry. Can you speak a little louder? They can't hear you.
Okay, um, so if there is another Firewise community that would like to get started, you can just contact me at the Lassen Fire State Council and I will kind of coordinate that effort between the Fire State Council and through CalFire to get that community going. So in order to start up another additional Firewise community, um, what you really need to start is, I think it's three members for a committee. Um, it doesn't have to be an official, you know, committee or board or anything like that. And that's when you start working with CalFire to kind of build out a risk assessment for the community. You look at all of the housing units within the community um to see kind of a percentage of, you know, who has, you know, fire safe roofs and who has done their zero to five landscaping and things of that nature. But that's more that I can go over with you if you do know of a community um that would like to start one.
My question is more how would, how do you, do other communities put together committees so that a whole community is involved in the Firewise process?
That's, it really comes down to the individual community. So Firewise is actually kind of starts at the national level. It is by the, um, I think it's the, it's the NFPA, which I can't remember what that is happening for. Um, and it's really, every Firewise community is just supposed to be a grassroots organization. It's community members getting together, deciding that they want to keep their community safe from wildfire. And the way that they do that is through all of the work that they're already likely putting into their properties throughout the year.
Order.
Um, so things like raking up leaves, raking up pine needles, doing, you know, repairs to your home in terms of just putting, you know, grates over your vents, redoing your roof throughout the year. All of those things start to add up. There's actually a time and expense investment sheet that's on that table there that kind of goes over all of the different things that count towards Firewise activity. A lot of it, all of you are already doing if you own a home if you, even if you rent up here by chance. You have to clean up your yard. That's just part of living up in the trees. That's Firewise, being invested in Firewise. And ultimately, what it comes down to for every community is what they want to see at the national level is one hour of time that you're putting into your home um per every household within a community. So, you know, if there's 300 houses in the community, that's only 300 hours that you have to split between everyone within the community. What it actually averages out to is you end up, once you start going through all the numbers, you start to see most people are doing 100, 200 hours around their home within a year. Probably even more because that's just what they remember that they did throughout the year. And that was maybe just raking up leaves and moving pine needles and not any of the other stuff that they could have possibly counted. But it really, it's just a way statistically at the national level to kind of see what effort people are putting into their communities to be safe and to think about how they can be safe from wildfire. Um, and CalFire really likes to see how much vegetation is being removed from individual um communities because that also kind of helps them see where they want to push a grant to you throughout the year. So again, that's kind of also why the Fire State Council is involved because we do so many projects that are grant based through grants from throughout the state and at the national level is we want to see communities that are invested in their community because that's where we want to invest our money as well to make sure that we're getting the most bang for our buck. Because hey, yes, we would ideally, in an ideal world, we would push as much money as we possibly could into every single community that is out there. That is not the reality that we face. And I think we all know that, especially here in Lassen County. It is just, we are such a large county and we're so hard. So we, we really like to see, CalFire really likes to see people investing in the space around them that, you know, they're glad when we're gonna come in and do work. They want us there to do that work.
Thank you.
We love that. Anyone else have any questions?
Yes.
So when we get the CalFire notices on our door where they do a walk through, is that part of the Firewise program?
That is not.
It's completely separate.
It's a completely separate thing. So that's just CalFire doing what it's supposed to do um and go around and do their inspections because that's kind of also how they're, they're gauging how a community is doing. Um, they have a whole process for that. I think they have to do it every three years? I think it's every three years. They have to go through and do inspections in certain areas and they kind of prioritize certain ones. And usually they'll come through and do an inspection before they start looking at the area to decide what kind of projects and stuff they're gonna do there for the year. Um, but it is a good way for you to start working with CalFire because they should be able to explain, especially if you're there and they come to do an inspection, what they're seeing and what needs to be improved. And you can also work through Firewise that way in terms of how can we find low cost, no cost ways to make these improvements as a community? How can we all come together to do this work that needs to be done? Because CalFire is naming me on, you know, these trees that need to be limbed up and I just, I don't have the time or the space, but maybe a neighbor does and has the ability. And that's where you come together as a Firewise community beyond, you know, the title of Firewise and work towards that goal together. Does anyone else have any questions? All right, well, that's all I really have. Um, but if you don't want to reach out to me individually at the Lassen Fire State Council, I'm sure you can go through Linda and John because they can always get ahold of me and we can get any question that you have answered at any time you know. But that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, will you approve of the meeting? Anyways. We haven't had a GM. And um, actually, we've all been trying to do the best we can to make sure that our community is still running. The lights are on, the bills are paid. Um, we didn't have anyone to do the minutes and uh Ms. Garcia was kind enough to go through and do all of these meetings for us and we'd like to go ahead and go through and approve them. The first one is 213, 25 meeting. These uh adjusted minutes amended. Um, do I have a vote to approve?
Motion to approve the 213, 25 meeting minutes.
I'll second it. Um, do you want to do a roll call after this one or?
Okay. Gerald Oliver?
Yes.
Kathy Plater?
Yes.
Ellen Soling?
Yes. Sorry.
The 313, 25 meeting. Got motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Kathy Plater?
Yes.
Ellen Soling?
Yes.
Gerald Oliver?
Yes.
The 317, 25 meetings all approved. Have a second?
Second.
4125 meeting. Motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the 425 meeting minutes.
I'll second it. Minutes of the 410, 25 meeting. Motion to approve. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Yeah, we can do a group vote. The 710 meeting. Motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the 710, 25 meeting minutes.
I'll second it. 1010 meeting. Motion to approve. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
And the 1023 meeting. Motion to approve.
All motion.
I'll second.
Who said that?
Kathy.
Probably should do both.
Both.
Ellen Soling?
Yes.
Kathy Plater?
Yes.
Gerald Oliver?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the board vacancy. Um, the board, the applicant for the vacancy is Scott Hagan. Do we have any public comments? No comments. Do we have a vote to approve Scott as board member?
All motion.
I'll second it. Hey, Scott. Gotta go.
Ellen Soling?
Yes.
Kathy Plater?
Yes.
Gerald Oliver?
Yes.
Oh, come on.
I'm Kathy Plater, Spalding Community Services District, for Congress Lassen, State of California Chairman of the Board, Director of Spalding Community Services District. Said meeting hereby certifies as a district office of Spalding CSD held at Ingle Lake Community Association Building in Sev County on the 13th day of November 2025.
Was said?
Was, was.
Scott, yeah, Scott Hagan.
Scott Hagan was said, was appointed at the Office of Direct, of Board Directors as here in the record sets Spalding CSD.
Today's date.
On today's date.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I, Scott Hagan, DuSalle, swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign, domestic, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. Take, I, um, I take this obligation freely without any mental reservations or purpose of invasion. And then I will, well, faithfully discharge to duty upon which I am and will take care of.
Welcome aboard. The next item is the um appointment of our volunteer interim general manager. And you all know, we've been looking for a general manager for, forever. Since Vincent's left. And um, we have been advertising, we spread the advertisement out to the Reading area, Reno. The last ad that we ran in Reading, we had some good results. We had like five applicants. Uh, one, which would have been a very good GM for us, declined the position. And um, at this point, we need a GM. Need an interim GM. Uh, we asked Ken Ward if he would be interested in helping us out, which he has.
You begged him.
You begged him, yeah. Anyway, um, if anybody has any comments for the board about Ken or would like to say anything, we'd like Ken to be our volunteer interim GM for the next few months. Any comments? We'll take a vote. Kathy?
We need a first and a second, I'm sorry.
Yes.
We made a motion for a second.
Make a motion to appoint Ken Ward as volunteer interim general manager.
Oh, second.
Now vote.
Gerald's second. Kathy Plater?
Yes.
Ellen Soling?
Yes.
Gerald Oliver?
Yes.
Scott Hagan?
Yes.
Welcome, Ken.
Steve?
No.
Good work.
Can you please say how pleased you are to help us out?
I, I, I will say this, that um there are some things that, that certainly needs to be addressed and I'll do my best, you know, it's uh, it's just the way it is. I look to the future, not in the past.
Good, thank you. We appreciate it. Okay, the next uh item on the agenda is revised uh district policy number 3400. What we've done is we've revised our current policies and procedures to match our insurance requirements.
I do have a comment.
Okay.
Like to come up, doesn't matter.
Hey, Cheryl?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you mind putting the mic closer to you? Vinnie has a hard time.
Okay, is that better? Okay. Um, the policies that you're recommending conflict with each other. So you might want to take a look at that. Um, you know, I, I don't want to go any further than that, but um, conflicting policies tend to get you in trouble, so.
Conflicting policies how? More specific.
There's two 3401s online and there's the 3402 that conflict with it. Plus you have to do a resolution to change a policy.
This will have to. I'll take a back for the next meeting. Number 11, new policy, 1590, adoption of new policy regarding the Civil Rights Act and American Disability Act. Three comments from the um.
Again, you have to do a resolution before you change a policy. But you still have to do a resolution. And are you sure that this is compliant?
Next thing is to ratify the.
Order.
Decorum.
The next item is to ratify the parking maintenance contract and expenditure. Do we have any public comments? Lot of public comment online. Nobody has anything to say?
Freedom of speech.
I mean, other than the fact that you're, after the fact ratifying, I, I don't, I, I don't know, I don't understand.
We'll just let FPPC decide because I've already filed with them.
That'll be another expense in the whole first, uh, community.
Yeah.
Well, they need to be done in order.
Do I have any other possible comment?
Need to make a motion to vote? To uh pay for the coating on the parking lot?
Didn't they do that last time?
And make a motion to approve?
But they didn't have any bills.
Order. Have a second?
Come second.
All right, Scott Hagan?
Yes.
Gerald Oliver?
Good same.
Kathy Plater?
Yes.
Ellen Soling?
Yes.
Do we have any public comments on the uh budget? The budget was done last July by our bookkeeper. We had it in the meeting in July and for some reason we never voted on it. So we need to get it voted on today. Do we have any more discussion on it?
I'm sorry.
I understand that the budget is based upon current rate of spending.
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Would you call for a public comment on that?
Yeah.
I can.
I have a question. Is there no narrative that goes with that? A lot I saw on the internet with just a spreadsheet. Why is there no narrative?
That's what the bookkeeper provided us with. We have no one that is volunteering to work in the office that has the qualifications to do a budget.
To write the narrative. So then along with that, I think you need to understand too that, and I think you know it, but I'm just gonna reiterate it. Now, Ken's on board and he is officially the treasurer as well as the general manager, correct? So there needs to be at least a very minimum, by law, quarterly treasury report and that should have narrative.
Okay.
Okay?
Make a motion to approve. How, how would you approve? Have a second?
Second.
Is that you, Scott?
Yes.
Ellen Soling?
Yes.
Kathy Plater?
Yes.
Gerald Oliver?
Yes.
Scott Hagan?
Yes.
The next agenda item is our fire department report.
I apologize, I should have done this during public comment that it regards break. And I just wanted to thank you, your whole team of volunteers for the phenomenal job you did keeping the hotel from burning my house down.
We have to get to that. There was three Alphire engines. Stones came up with their water tanker engine and then all our equipment was out. It was a very good save, especially for a tree.
I'm still tired.
Uh, to date, we have, since the last time we reported, four medical calls, three fires. Uh, one was in a structure fire. Uh, we're still in investigation, Eric, part of that. Um, we have been in contact with public safety regarding the potential issue of public health and safety of the debris. Uh, luckily turned out last windstorm, we didn't have anything go flying. As opposed to that.
Laugh again.
And that windstorm, we did have eight trees go down in Spalding. Uh, the last.
Order.
I had.
Don't hurt it. Don't hurt it. Turn on mute it.
Oh, my God.
Hey, guys, they're talking nice.
I was just thinking here, is it you know the laws?
Mute it.
Just mute it. Who is that? Dave?
You can't mute it.
You can't hear a word you're saying.
We can hear you though.
You're bumbling. It's not like you're having a meeting that people can participate in because you can't hear them. Ever since they got back from the break, they, you can't hear anything.
Get a little closer to the microphone.
Oh, and one traffic collision was also part of our calls. Um, we got, the frontier was out here yesterday. I believe that was the last frontier line to get fixed. Um, if anybody does see any other lines that are in danger, please let us know so we can contact hell mud. Um, I think we got everything stabilized. That's all right?
David's not here to give a waste water report. We're continually working on trying to get bids to start work on the sewer system sometime this winter. Um, we're continually working on trying to get, uh, bids to start work on the sewer system sometime this winter. Um, cure, uh, Susan Bill came out, one month ago, a month ago, pretty much a month ago. Uh, hopefully this coming week we'll have a bid from them. Nobody locally will deal with us because of our community and the situation we're in, so. Go to Reading and we're also going to go to Reno and see if we can get people from those areas to come up and, um, give us some bids. And, um, that's it for David. Everything is working smoothly now. And, uh, hopefully we can get, uh, somebody in here to fix that before something happens again. And that's it for Susan.
Oh, Frankie just muted the whole meeting. He just muted us on the meeting. I can hear nothing. It's not right.
It's not legal.
Sorry, can you hear that now?
Yeah, I can barely hear you. I can't hear the board at all. Because they don't talk into their microphones.
Anyway, the next. The next.
I thought you guys borrowed this new video.
No, we didn't get it. The next item on the agenda is board member reports. I basically have nothing to say. Ellen? Line has nothing to say, it's not here. Here it is.
No.
Okay. I make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Time is, uh, 212, meetings adjourned.
Oh, all.
All.
Ellen Soling?
Yes.
Kathy Plater? Gerald Oliver?
Yes.
Scott Hagan? Gerald Oliver?
Yes, yes.
You second?
Yes, yes.
I can't believe that they did that in front of everyone. And she keeps gabbling, Vicky. Yeah, she gabbling, nobody else.